O'Kane.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
We stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge.
... to the flag, and to the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Historic Preservation Commission, Jack Walsh. Jack, you want to come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve? Yep?
Well, you guys know I'm Jack Walsh, new to Sioux City, Iowa. I'd like to serve because I'm working with plan architecture with a passion for historic preservation, especially in the architectural world. I'm from South Dakota, peer South Dakota, but my family, grandparents, parents were raised in Sioux City, so I've been here a number of times before choosing to live here currently.
Who was your grandparents?
Michael Walsh. He was a Woodbury County judge, and then Tim Bloom was an officer here in town, and then...
Okay.
Good judge, I might add.
Sweet.
Old city attorney, too.
City attorney, too.
City attorney, a lot of time.
Yep. I get to see him at 5:30 tonight. We're going to Mordo's.
You'd have to be old like Dan and I to remember that.
Yeah. Yeah, tell them hi for us.
Will do.
And thanks for making the application because you're new to the community and you're showing that interest. I think you can add a lot to the Historic Preservation Committee or Commission, so thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, man.
All right, thank you. We'll go to the consent agenda next, which is items three through 13D. You can consider them to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. If you want to speak on an agenda item, please come up as I read that number. If you want to speak on an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns and remember to always state your name. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is a reading of the August 18th City Council minutes. Four is a motion appointing Don Kirkpatrick to the Human Rights Commission. Five is a resolution temporarily closing a section of 4th Street on October 18th for the art affair. Six is a resolution awarding a purchase order to Johnson Lancaster and Associates for one gas fryer. Seven are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving a grant agreement with IDOT for airport improvements program funding through the State Airport Development Program for the South Ramp Reconstruction Project. B is a resolution approving a grant agreement with IDOT for the commercial service vertical infrastructure funding through the State Airport Development Program for final phases of the terminal roof replacement boilers and doors. Eight are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approve an emergent of record services agreement with Masabi and the CAD, AVL, and Mobile Fair Payment System for Transit. A is, or B is a resolution awarding a consulting services agreement to municipal H2O for reviewing and updating the risk and resilience assessment plan and emergency response plan. C is a resolution approving a contract to restoration system for the Discovery Parking Ramp Repair Project. Actions relating to personnel. A is a motion approving the annual performance evaluation for the Human Rights Director for 2024. B is a motion approving the annual performance evaluation for the Human Rights Director for fiscal year 2025. C is a resolution appointing Thomas Pingel as the Public Works Director.
Mayor, I have a couple of comments on that, if I may. First of all, I'm really pleased and happy that Tom Pingel has stepped up to that role for Public Works Director. I think, Tom, you're going to do a great job for us. You've been doing a great job for the wastewater treatment plant, and what I really liked about this combination of our staff members and the team is it says the Public Works Director will retain executive oversight of the Phase 1 and Phase 2 wastewater treatment facility plan improvements projects, including the coordination of the engineering, construction, and inter-agency engagement. And that is so important to this community that you continue that, Tom, and I'm really glad that you're willing to take that on. I'm just really pleased, and this is good news. It's been vacant for what, almost two years, I think? And Tom Pingel, you're the one, so thank you.
Interactions authorizing payments. A is a resolution authorizing payment to Blackhawk Roof for the terminal roof replacement project at the airport. B is a resolution authorizing payment to Dostel's Construction for the Headington Park Splash Pad Project. Eleven are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine, and vapor product permits. Twelve are applications for alcohol licenses. Thirteen are board, commission, and committee minutes. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Passes 5-0. Recommendations of P and Z. Fourteen is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment Actions on August 12th. I'll move that. Second.
Councilwoman Shaner.
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Fifteen is a resolution approving the final plot of Treber addition. The petitioner is Sioux Land Equity. The P and Z recommends approval. I'll move that. Second.
Do you hire a local contractor to finish those streetlights in town?
No.
They were fixing some today, so I thought maybe...
5-0. Sixteen is an ordinance dedicating and naming land commonly known as 3427 Old Lakeport Road as Old Lakeport Road. The petitioner is the City of Sioux City, and P and Z recommends approval. I'll move that. Second.
Yeah, Andrew Geiser, planning zoning chair, just if you guys have any questions.
Passes 5-0. Is anybody opposed to waiving the statutory rule? Move it.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Move second and third.
Second.
Scott. Waters.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
O'Kane.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Seventeen is a hearing and ordinance vacating a portion of Madison Street and a portion of 45th Street adjacent to 4510 Van Buren Street. The petitioner is Barry Bulkey and Melissa Einhorn. P and Z recommends approval of the vacation of the Madison Street, but recommends denial of the vacation of the 45th Street. So we would move it as presented, and then if we want... So I'll move it.
Second.
We're going to need... I know they're here to speak. Go ahead, though.
Yeah, we, you know, we kind of based our motion off of what City Engineering said about leaving 46th Street open for future progress that's possibly getting planned on the adjacent property. So that's kind of what planning and zoning did. They followed the recommendation of City Engineering.
I should have driven this. I live out there. Is 46th Street, it doesn't, it's not one that runs all the way through. That's 45th, right? Which one runs all the way through? So where would...
Gordon, City Engineer.
Close 46th at?
Can I take, open this up?
Yeah, I want, I didn't get it. I couldn't open his, so...
I think Gordon's going to put it up.
Oh, it's 45th. I see where you're...
Yeah, it's 45th. That's what I'm saying, not 46th. And you think that'll be punched through someday, Gordon, 45th?
Possible.
Huh?
It'll be tough, but it is possible.
Anything's possible. Is there a likelihood that you would ever need it?
I believe so. I mean, when that property to the west gets developed, that could easily be in there. That could be a secondary access, if not secondary, but it would also be for utilities. I'll get to it here.
You guys want to talk, come on up.
So here it is. Can you see my cursor there?
Yeah.
So this is the street.
45th Street.
This is 45th.
Yeah, because 46th runs through.
Right. But we have water and sewer down here on Van Buren right at the end that would be...
I see. I just said, oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and that could be easily taken. Not easily, no. I'll take that back. Not easily. It would have, there would be definitely some excavating to get water and sewer up to this site and over to this vacant field.
But you're saying in the event that that would be developed, you would want to punch 45th through to be able to feed it?
It would be, it would be a good secondary access through this and on 45th and at Van Buren going north. Not necessarily south because there's, there's a severe grade drop-off there on that side. It still could be, it still could be graded, but I mean, it would be very difficult. But it could also go through to 45th. I hiked it today.
Yes, sir.
Barry Bulkey, 4103 Jefferson Street.
No worries. You're good. You're good.
No, no, I just, it's calming a little bit here.
Yep.
So me and my wife wanted to buy 45th Street. Our property is actually directly to the south there. Yeah, so we wanted to buy that because that would give us an ability, because that 14-foot alley there to the north is the only access that we're going to be able to have currently. And so therefore, we wanted to buy that property so we can push our easements further to the north. We've walked out there many times. I'm kind of confused because, as you said, there's a very steep grade. I didn't think this was going to be an issue considering that the zoning also went out there and walked it, and they didn't think it was going to be an issue. But at the end of 45th Street, where it's like an alley, I had sent you guys pictures. I don't know if you got a chance to look at them. It's a 50-foot cliff. It's not just a grade. It's, it's 50 feet, and from there, it continues to climb to the top of the hill where my property is and go down.
Where's the cliff at on here? Because I did open your pictures.
Oh, sorry. So the cliff is...
I did, but I couldn't figure out the perspective.
Sorry, sorry. So the cliff is actually, if you go to the right, right, not left, right, right. Yep, keep going, keep going, keep going. There. That's that 50-foot cliff. That is where 45th Street ends.
Ends.
And so then the last picture that I took on Van Buren is at where Van Buren is. So if you go to Van Buren Street and go a little bit south, yep, right there.
Yeah.
That shows that it's a 45-degree angle straight up. Any, like I was told, anything can be built, but at a cost, considering the fact that, yet again, I was confused because 46th Street is gravel road, runs right adjacent to that property, as well as Jefferson Street on the west side, which I sent you guys the pictures of what the grade is. Like, it's, it's not a 50-foot cliff and a hillside that they're trying to develop over. So that's why I was just kind of confused of why this is an issue. I know the guy, Mr. Reynolds, that owns the property that he said is going to be developed, he had claimed his house is to the north.
He owns these two properties here to the...
He owns that property there, and then the property that's to the north. Nope.
No?
Nope, that's...
Oh, this one?
Yep, he owns that property there, and then also Madison Street that he had bought from the city to be vacated.
What about the L shape around his property, Gordon? That one?
That one there is...
That's somebody else.
Oh, Rent Sucks.
Somebody else.
Yeah, that's Rent Sucks.
And the strip, too?
Sorry, say that again?
Strip.
To the left there.
So Mr. Reynolds owns half of it right next to Rent Sucks, but the whole thing up at the top. So yet again, why I was kind of confused because he had already bought a street on, so this, this land that he says he's going to develop, he owns the property to the east. The north and west, the city owns, which by my pictures kind of shows, like, is the north side going to be a little bit harder because there's a hump? Yeah. But as a person that lives on Jefferson Street, it's pretty flat there, like...
So he can get into his whole property on Jefferson Street and 46th Street if he wants to.
Reynolds?
Mm-hmm.
This, this guy here, yes.
Yes, if he wants to develop it in the future, I'm saying.
There water in Jefferson Street?
Yeah.
Jefferson?
Yeah, because I actually, in the picture I sent you guys, there's the hydrant literally right next to us. It's pretty much at the property.
What are you going to do with yours?
So, so for mine is, we're building a house up there. Like, like, like I said, I've lived in Leeds. I love Leeds. You guys know that. So therefore, for me, I wanted to build a house here because I met a fellow community club member, and she's, I had talked about, I'm glad you bought that property because it's beautiful up there. She's like, oh, well, guess what? And now I get to actually build a house here in Leeds that my wife, my wife's from Canada, like, she always joked with me about the whole living in Leeds thing, like, you're, and now when this became an opportunity for us, it was amazing because it's like, so for us, we're building a house. Like I said, it's a hill, so us being able to push the house further north makes it a lot easier for us, and we wanted to buy 45th. The zoning told us then for Madison, well, we don't like to landlocked city property. So we said, okay, we're willing to spend the extra money to buy Madison from the city. That way, it's not landlocked. But like I said...
When did you do that?
Huh?
When did you do that?
We, that's, that's part of that.
That's part of this. Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
So that's why we're, like I said, I was kind of confused when all of a sudden there was pushback when we're planning on doing more than we needed to for a piece of property that is just a hillside.
Where are you going to access off of?
That alleyway, that 14-foot alleyway.
Just right here.
You're going to go down from 46th?
Yep.
Oh, so you want to build on the far north end and no access off 46th and then that access?
Yeah, we don't want to...
But then you're not going to have any other way out? It's just that?
Yeah.
That access your driveway, essentially?
Yeah, just like the other houses on that alleyway. There's, the three other houses are using that alleyway as their access as well.
Is there access the other direction?
No, that is hillside and street, and we're planning on leaving it that way because...
And you don't have a house there now, right?
No.
Yeah, it's just...
No, we're, we're going to be developing it.
Nice.
Well, and it's, yeah, I don't, it's tough, I guess, from my standpoint, right? Like, I'm trying to think of, I'm a big believer in future planning and thinking about where we could go and, and what you could do, and you're right. I mean, it looks like beautiful ground out there, and so if you have an opportunity to develop that area, you know, even the fields on that side, if you do larger lots, or you know, more people would be able to enjoy that, much how you want to enjoy it. And it's tough thinking about it, too, because then I don't know the feasibility of extending 45th. That I don't know, and it looks challenging. I'm with you, but I mean, people do more wild things than I could imagine. And so I would just wonder, like, if you didn't push as far north, you know, if you kept in line just below that level of 45th and built, you know, you'd still have all that land down that one side, and, but then you'd have another road to be able to access out if it ever did, right? Like, if 45th ever extended, then you'd have another way to get out rather than just that alleyway.
Right, but in the same process, then you guys, so say, I build my house.
Yeah.
And you put that road through. I'm trapped.
What do you mean?
Like, when that road's being developed, I'm trapped. I won't be able to get to my house. And on top of it, like I said, with that grade there, so I do...
Well, but I mean, they would probably, they would...
They're going to cut a valley through there in order to get that to work.
Because you'd imagine they would start on the east, if it is, you know, work their way, so you would continue using that alleyway until then they got there, but you're right.
Yeah, but I mean...
I think he's referring to a driveway. His house would be sitting so far up.
Yeah, they're going to carve, like, for, for road development, like, you don't just build over the hill.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You're going to, like, I've worked on a lot of civil drawings. Grade is an issue, and nobody likes Polk Street anymore, like, and that's what this would turn into unless, like, he said.
Unless you dig through it.
You're going to spend a lot of money to carve a valley through there where you already have the two roads to either side, all right? And potentially a third if that highlighted part there, Mr. Reynolds wanted to sell that to the developer for a third access.
So, yeah, you're saying just utilize 46th and Jefferson.
Yeah.
To access that land rather than worrying about punching through.
Yeah, like I said, that's why I was just confused by this, because this is just land that's just kind of sitting there not doing anything all these years, and I wanted to buy it, and now all of a sudden it turned into a little bit of contention. That's why I'm kind of, that's why before you guys...
Yeah, and that, yeah.
Is Mr. Reynolds' land, is that cropland right now?
Currently, yeah.
Mr. Geiser, did anyone object to zoning?
No, we, that was, that was unanimous, 7-0. We basically...
But no one showed up to, to object to it?
Uh, Reynolds staff. Yeah, Reynolds, Reynolds did because he said he accesses that land through that alley from the north, the same alley they use to access their property. He uses that alley to access his farm ground. So he, he very much objected to it.
I've been around here a long time. Reynolds would be like the fourth guy that I know that said is going to develop this piece of property. I don't have enough years left for this piece of property to ever get developed.
Yeah.
Topography is unbelievable.
Right.
And that, and that probably...
The guy owns a whole piece of ground there. How, and if he wants to access his ground, it's his back door. Why is that a problem? I guess I don't understand that.
That, that wasn't so, I don't believe that was so much a problem for us. It was, it was, you know, a little bit of that and a lot of Gordon saying that that was how they would get utilities to that property in the future.
But you're not going to punch, you're not going to punch Madison Street through or whatever, do you think, Gordon?
No, no.
You're not going to punch it, so you're going to have to, you're going to loop a water line through and connect up to 46th off of Jefferson.
Yeah, you'll punch it through up Van Buren, across 45th, 45th, and into this property, connecting to Jefferson and 46th. But there's also sanitary, too. The sanitary is downhill from there. It would actually be beneficial if it did hit down at Van Buren and south of 45th.
Would you have to put a home station in then at the top of the hill for that sanitary?
No, no, that'd be gravity-fed down that way because it's down below.
What would happen if it...
It'd be a deep cut on your, on 45th. What's that?
The gentleman that's objecting, his property has a natural slope to it, right? It's not flat-flat.
It's not flat-flat, but it's...
Well, I'm saying you, your sewer is going to drain to Jefferson at the end of the day. It can, anyway, and you're going to, you can loop a water. If he's seriously going to develop it, you can, you're going to put a street in there, a cul-de-sac of some kind, and you can loop that water back up to 46th.
That's what I keep thinking is that it's like, how much work would the developer want to put in to do 45th Street if you could go off of 46th or Jefferson?
Not necessarily putting in a street. Again, it's just for the access to the water sewer. They don't have to put in a street for that. They'd just be digging.
Yeah.
But you're still going to have a load of dirt to move to do it.
Yeah, that is correct.
So how, 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 how fair is that to a person that's buying a piece of property with no plans out there to develop, that you're going to change his driveway so dramatic when you get done, he can't get into his own house when we're letting him buy the side street? That makes, that, that's just, that's hard for me to understand how, I mean, basically, you're telling him lower your lot right now because you may not be able to hook on to it.
No, that's not it at all.
Well, that's what's going to happen.
No, he doesn't, we don't know. He hasn't got, he doesn't have plans for where his house is going.
Okay.
And when a, when a street does go in, if a street ever goes in there, then that would have to be modified to accommodate them. We're not going to leave them hanging, literally.
Well, as, as it's presented to P and Z, if we vote yes, then it means we don't accept...
It's, the way that it is currently on the agenda is for vacation of both tracks.
Exactly, because that's what they petitioned.
Yes.
So if we vote yes, he gets them both.
Correct.
I thought we had a condition where it was just...
The council would have to amend to accept the question.
We have to vote on it how it comes to you or amend as you did. That's why I'm explaining.
Okay.
And I'm just explaining to them what we have to do.
And this is just on the vacation step for today, just the vacation.
Does anybody want to amend it? Okay, then vote. Anybody else here to be heard on it? Is there anybody else to be heard? Come on up, state your name.
Oh, now he's bringing the big guns up.
No, Melissa Einhorn at 4103 Jefferson. I just wanted to make a note that when he gave his recommendation, I don't think he'd had a chance to see the property yet, whereas zoning...
I don't know if that's changed yet, that you've had a chance to look at it or not?
Yes.
All right. Nobody else be heard, so go ahead and vote, and then we'll see what it, how the vote goes. It passes 5-0, which means it passed the way you presented it. I don't want to waive the statutory rule. That'll give the other owner a chance to come in next week. So it got first reading, it takes three, so, but you got first reading through what, the way you present it. Okay? Eighteen is a hearing and ordinance amending Chapter 25.02 entitled zoning districts and land uses and Chapter 25.07 entitled definitions of municipal code. The petitioner is the City of Sioux City, and P and Z recommends approval.
I'd, I'd just like to thank staff.
I gotta move it first, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Second. Okay.
I'd, I'd just like to thank staff. I think they did a great job with, with, you know, taking their time, going through and making the correct changes to the ordinance to make it better for, for the community, I guess. They did, they put a lot of, a lot of...
They're just not going to have any more licenses. I think we got...
We're not going to either, based on our limits.
I'm, I'm with the mayor on that. I just, I struggle because I agree, I understand where you're coming from, and, you know, I, community members reach out or constituents reach out to me about the difference between used dealerships that are littering all over each corner of our community and proliferating like mad. There's a difference between those and brand-new dealerships, you know, or coming to town or offering a different make, model, whatever it is. I understand that, and so I appreciate, but it's, it's just like, where does that end? Or, you know, and so I guess that was going to be, if I had a question, my one question would be, I know that we break it out into new and used and then used. Is there a level or a balance of that? Like, if I have five brand-new cars, but 60 used cars, I mean, you know what I mean? Like, I think people try to game the system or, you know, like, work around these different types of things, and I just want to make sure that it's the intent of what we have here today because I'm, I'm with the mayor as such that it's like, gosh, we have doubled the amount of dealerships as our peers. Like, where does that end, and how do you have a hard stop to cut that back?
Which old planning, that was a consideration, and how we got to the new and used is that most new dealers, franchisees, also sell used cars.
I completely agree, and usually they're at a much different level and they have the ground, but I'm saying if someone came in, you know, is there a balance of a percentage? You know, how many have to be new versus, or the amount of ground? Because usually these new dealerships aren't carrying a ton of new... Because usually, these new dealerships aren't carrying a ton of new, or if they are, they're newer models and models like that were traded in for the brand-new vehicles. I don't know what that looks like, Wade, I'm just trying to think through.
So part of, part of this, how we broke these out, we also wrote new definitions for each of those standards. And so that's how we would break that out. And so part of that change is with the new definition so that explains where everybody would fall into.
But, but here's what you gotta be careful for today that we didn't even think about when you wrote this ordinance. Maybe you guys did, but I don't believe so. Now you can go get a nice little dealer's license because you're selling, Nicole doesn't want to hear this, golf carts that are fully licensed and go thirty miles an hour and have seat belts, and they're a new vehicle. And you can put four or five of them on a lot, and you got a new car dealership. And then you can have thirty-five used cars. And a lot of, in, an example is the guy on, on the way to Lawton. He's got those, he's got those licensed electrical golf carts, basically, but they're licensed.
They're like UTV-type golf carts?
Can't stop them if they're licensed vehicles, they're DOT-approved. And he's got fifteen used cars. That's, that's... Just another can of worms that we open here that... I, I, I mean, I appreciate, you guys have spent a lot of time on this, but...
And I think you've done a very good job.
How many used car lots do I have to drive by going to my office in the morning? How many before we say it's enough?
Steven Stalka, City Legal, just to build on what Wade was saying. I think there is a little bit of a limitation in terms of, you know, who's gonna hand out the franchises to the new dealers, especially in the, now, about the golf cart thing, that's a new thing, I hadn't thought of that, but...
Yeah, no, but I didn't either until I knew that guy was selling them.
Yeah, but, but like Chevy's not gonna start a new, authorize a new dealership and compete with Nefler directly, right, on new sales. But the other thing is, and, and what I wanted to point out is, one of the things this ordinance targets majorly is the pocket car dealerships that, that we've seen a lot of applications for and that seem to be located in neighborhoods that aren't really suited to that use. And this ordinance balances, or I think strikes the right balance by placing a limit, rather, a lower limit on the lot size you could have for a new used car dealership, right? But also allowing things like when, you know, we have the bypass going in, there's some people that are getting bought out, stuff like that, or there's other, you know, people just sell their lot for any reason, you know? Allowing them to relocate even with the cap and everything to kind of protect their rights in that niche case that does nevertheless come up. But again, keeping them out of the, the smaller business areas that aren't really suited to really any car lot, let alone car lot.
Quit triple-stacking their cars so you can't walk through a lot. I'd like them to quit parking on the grass. I'd like them to have to have pavement, and I'd like to have to, I mean, drive by them. They're not, they're not complying yet.
One of the things that, going forward, and I know you guys have made it very clear to us that the enforcement of the site plan, that the parking spots would be mapped out and marked so that you could drive through, so that is...
But site plan doesn't do anything if you don't have enforcement of that site plan. I mean, drive Lewis Boulevard, I'm not gonna say which side of the street because I don't need to get sued today. Just drive Lewis Boulevard and tell me how you drive a car through some of those lots.
I know we have been enforcing the, the code to some degree, at least on these dealerships.
I'd like...
If, if there's future violators, obviously...
The police always tell me how they enforce fireworks, and we haven't written a ticket in thirteen years around here. So I'd like to just see that first ticket you guys wrote for...
I don't know if Ron's here today or not, but I just wanted to point to, but I know they have been doing some degree of enforcement.
And I guess I do have a, a question with that. Maybe it is, maybe it's a part of, and I don't know if this gets me sued, so the mayor probably understands better. But there is one on Lewis Boulevard closer to Launitas, the new Launitas down in that area, just, you know where I'm talking? Um, and they installed a sidewalk to be able to get through. They moved a whole bunch of cars so that they could...
That was part of the site plan process.
Okay.
Because they, there are a lot, actually, if you go look at those lots along there, most of those lots all extend into the right-of-way as of today. And we've actually, I've, this is kind of interesting, but we actually got a compliment from one of the state snowplow drivers because they have to slow down so far because they throw snow onto those cars, and then they come and complain to them.
They don't do that at my house, but I appreciate their...
So, but...
Well, I was just gonna, because I was gonna compliment you and say that I appreciate, like, I could tell then, it's a lot cleaner look, they moved them back, it's not as congested. There's gonna be a sidewalk presumably going through there now, like, I...
Yeah, they're relatively...
If we're gonna do more of that stuff, you know, and trying to hold people accountable for those different things, I appreciate that, I just...
Well, and, and this, this gives an avenue to be a lot more specific as to what is required so that enforcement can write tickets if so choose. But, but it's, it's a lot clearer, and there's a lot less gray area. And I think it, and it's encouraged a lot of the dealerships in town too. Not all of them, but many of them have cleaned up nicely, and hopefully will stay that way.
Well, Mayor, we just need to move the people doing the weed violations, move that over to the dealership violation. I mean, they're, they're on top of those complaints, I mean...
They should have some free time soon, right?
Yeah, exactly, we're changing seasons.
But we did hear from one of them that we did grant a license during that two-month period when the, between the moratoriums. And when he was installing and doing his improvements, he did get compliments from people driving by, and so it is noticeable. And I think that's something to say about that.
Right, those facelifts might actually get someone to stop there and buy a vehicle, you know?
I'm telling you, driving by, I noticed, and I was like, this looks so much better. I was very impressed and happy with that. Um, one other question that I had, oh, was, and maybe it gets to kind of what South Sioux did, you know, to at least stem some of those back or be able to shrink that down. My question is, if they were to sell, like, say, we buy it, we or someone else bought it for development, then they had to relocate, right? We were talking about that they would have the ability to relocate that dealership as long as it was conforming and figure that out. Do we have a, is there a timeline on that? Like, did South Sioux or did anywhere else give a timeline? I just don't want them to be like, okay, well, we'll move, but there's no lot available, there's no place that we can't. So now indefinitely, we will have this ability to open it up?
Yeah, so, part of the condition that we, we made a little caveat in there to allow anybody that's taken for some type of street redevelopment purpose.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so this would directly, and I know you, you all kind of directed us to do, like, take a look at this.
Yes.
The Gordon Drive.
Two of them, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And...
It's a one-year period, isn't it?
Well, we were gonna allow them to move.
Yeah.
Yes.
But, uh... This also allows anybody going forward, if there was to be another street project down the road, any type of expansion that they could potentially move if the state or somebody buys them out.
But they have to do it within twelve months, don't they?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, we, we treated it just like, if memory, I don't have a copy in front of me, but I thought, we treat it just like legal non-conforming uses nowadays.
Right.
If you cease, if you cease a non-conforming use, if you, if you restart it within the twelve months, that's fine. If you don't, then it's gone.
Okay.
So, same kind of language.
All right.
Any other questions?
Thanks for your time on this, I know it's...
Thank you. Yes, our public policy team worked on that too.
Passes four to one, I vote no. We'll do second, third next week. Nineteenth, a hearing and resolution approving plans and specs for the terminal rooftop unit replacement Phase Two project, I'll move that.
Second.
Public hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five-zero. Twentieth, a hearing and resolution approving First Amendment to the lease agreement with Western Iowa Tech Community College for property known as Ruger Field, forty-eight hundred Laurel Avenue, to extend the term of the lease, I'll move that.
Second.
Period, public hearing's now open, anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes five-zero, are any citizens in the audience want to be heard? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name. Seeing none, we will go to council concerns. Mr. O'Kane?
Great first day back at school. That's everything for this week.
Okay?
I usually bring up construction and detours and those kinds of things, so I'm gonna continue on that path. There is a new parking ordinance going on on Outer Drive by the schools, by North Middle. There is no longer parking allowed on the street. It's just been too congested, and it's become too unsafe. We've communicated with the school, and there's plenty of parking space inside of the school. And I think that people feel it's more convenient to be on the street, but it's also more dangerous. So the temporary signs went up last Friday. I cut through there on my way here today, there was no one parked on the street. It was wonderful. So they're going in the parking lot, they're coming out on Buckwalter and going to the light, which is how they should be doing it. So it worked out very well. I didn't see one car there, and I was a little shocked, actually, but I'm just glad that everybody followed those signs, and the regular signs will be installed once the locators get out there and make sure there's no utilities there. So there's, we got Fourth Street, employed street bridges back open and up and running. Gosh, people asked about, is it gonna still shake? The one on Floyd, absolutely yes, it's going to still shake. It has to do that because if it doesn't shake, it will break. That's what engineers tell me. Yep, it's gotta, it's gotta give. Otherwise, that's it. I don't have any more.
All I have is, it was a busy week, I know, or busy weekend in Sioux City with the different concerts downtown. I'm told that they went really well and saw a lot of people filling them out and traveling, so, or traveling down to it. You like that? You like that one? So, um, so, no, I think that's all I have, Mayor.
That's it, huh?
That's it, buddy.
Okay. Dan?
Couple things, following Matthew's comments, be sure and watch the school buses. With, they have the red lights going, please stop, watch for the kids, the pedestrians, it's extremely important. And then secondly, just hopefully, hopefully, everybody's getting their comments into Janelle with regard to the city manager proceedings that we are trying to address. That's all I have.
Yesterday, I had to give a welcome to, I, I'm not, I know Olocomo Estan, Muchas Gracias, other than that, my five years of Spanish...
There you go, bud.
Biggest waste of public education money that I can think of. Mexico in El Corazon.
Yep.
It was, were you there?
I couldn't make it, no.
Absolutely fabulous. It was unbelievable, and...
I was gonna say, I, I helped the group or worked with them the whole way here, and then I had to do a speech across town.
But it was very nice, I mean, the, the musicians were as first classes. I couldn't believe it, so, I, I didn't know there, I always thought there was one type of Mexican music, Marachi bands, but there's another type, like the Desi Arnez-type band.
Big band.
Outstanding, and the dancers were great. And other than that, the Bears beat the Chiefs, and the Cyclones won in Ireland. How could it be any better weekend than that? I move we adjourn.
Second.
Waters?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
O'Kane?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
I told you I would do that.